Good morning, everybody. I'm going to call the meeting to order. I want to remind everybody to please put your cellphones on silent. Would you please join us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance?
Please pray with me if you'd like to. Dear Lord, as we come together today, we join in gratitude for the blessings bestowed on our community. May we be mindful of the shared values that bind us, and may this month foster unity, compassion, and understanding among all of us. May the Spirit of this upcoming Thanksgiving Day inspire us to work towards a future for our county where kindness and cooperation prevail. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to take a brief recess and go into our special districts. We're going to begin with mosquito control. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Is there any general public comment? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment, come back to the board. Is there approval for minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Madam Secretary, Commissioner Fowler with Commissioner Bart Sucketing. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll go to consent. Is there a motion?
With approval.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. There's nothing on regular. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
All right, we'll move on to the environmental control. We'll call the meeting to order. General public comment. Anyone wishing to address the environmental control board? Seeing no movement, come back to the board. Looking for approval of the minutes of August 15, 2023.
With approval.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. There are no items on the consent agenda or regular agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We'll move on to the erosion.
Wait a second. Second, call the roll. She made the motion, you didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Did you? Did we call it?
She, it was Commissioner Bart who made the motion, but nobody seconded. All second.
Oh, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Here we go. Call it again. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. All right, on to the erosion control. Call the meeting to order. General public comment. Anyone wishing to address the erosion control board? Seeing no movement, come back to the board. Looking for approval of minutes of October 17, 2023.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Next item is consent agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bart?
I will call the Sustainability District to order. I will open general public comment. Anybody wishing to address the board? Seeing no one, I am closing public comment. Approval of the minutes from October 17, 2023, and August 15, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There's no items on the consent. Nothing on the regular. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you very much. We're adjourned on that.
Okay, we'll come back to the regular meeting. Is there approval for the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. There's no presentations. Move on to public comment. Is anybody wishing to come forward at this time? Come to the podium and state your name, please. Seeing no, we'll close public comment. We'll move to proclamations. Madam Secretary, would you please call item A for Alzheimer's?
A resolution proclaiming the month of November 2023 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, where as the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, has made the following determinations. In the United States, there are over 6.7 million reported cases of Alzheimer's disease. In Florida, approximately 580,000 people aged 65 and older are living with Alzheimer's disease. In Florida, cases are projected to increase by 24% to 720,000 by 2025, with an estimated 70% of the care provided by family caregivers in the community. In St. Lucie County, the age group 65 and older is at its greatest risk for Alzheimer's disease, exceeds 24% of the population, and approximately 10,000 currently have probable Alzheimer's disease. It is critical that Alzheimer's families coping with the disease are safe, with well-being, dignity, and quality of life preserved through services and resources accessible to all. We extend gratitude to those advocates and supporters, including but not limited to Alzheimer's Community Care and its Boards of Directors. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of St. Lucie County, Florida, does hereby proclaim the month of November 2023 as Alzheimer's Awareness Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, passed and duly adopted this 14th day of November 2023.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And we have with us, I do not know. Is there somebody? Hi, how are you? Good morning. Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. Good morning. Honorable Chair Kathy Townsend and other team board of County Commissioners for declaring that November 2023 Alzheimer's Public Awareness Month, and for valuing our hard work and local work at our community right now with our mission. We were saying there's approximately 10,000 patients residing in St. Lucie County probable with Alzheimer's disease. By 2025, the number is predicted to grow about 25%, 24%. That's a large number. That's about three patients a day for the next two years by 2025. So we pledge that our families who are coping with the disease are safe in well-being, dignity, and quality of life to be preserved through a combination of services and accessible to all. Your recognition to our cause through this November 2023 Public Awareness Proclamation demonstrates your concern for the most vulnerable and fragile population, our Alzheimer's family. So we just want to say thank you for making us aware of the Alzheimer's Month.
You give us your names for the record?
Definitely. Alexander Guanarita, VPO Finance, representing us Alzheimer's Community Care.
I'm Virginia Pruitt. I'm the Administrative Assistant for the Executive Office. Thank you.
And thank you.
On behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, I just want to say thank you. I personally know the difference that you make in a community with Alzheimer's, and without you, there would be a lot more sadness in this community. You bring a lot of awareness, and you help families in need. And so it's a very terrible disease, but what you do is very important. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And if you want to come up to the front?
Yes.
We'll take a picture with the county.
Thank you.
Are we doing that?
Thank you. Okay, there was another proclamation, but I don't believe that they are here for the Prematurity Awareness Month. Is anybody here to receive that? Okay, so Madam Secretary, we'll just include that in with our consent agendas today. Thank you. Is there, there's no minutes, so we'll move on to consent agenda. I also want to recognize, I'm sorry, Prematurity Awareness Month is the one that came earlier as well, too, that was not added. Is the Business Women's proclamation, are they here today? Nope. Okay. Consent agenda, does anybody want to pull anything? Mention anything? If not, off to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to public hearings, and we will begin with item one, the Orange Avenue. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'll be joined in just a few moments by Irene Settlemeyer, Senior Planner, with this morning's public hearing for the Orange Avenue and Shin 35-acre planned non-residential development. This is a rezoning petition coupled with a preliminary development plan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the County Commission. Thank you. So this public hearing is regarding the application by Lisa and Gary White, the owners of the subject plus or minus 35 acres, to change the zoning district from Ag 1 to planned non-residential development and to obtain approval of a preliminary development plan. This public hearing was properly noticed with a mailed notice to owners of property within 500 feet, publication in the newspaper, and erection of signs on both Shin and Orange So the property is southeast corner of Shin Road and Orange Avenue. It's about two and a half miles west of the Florida Turnpike. This aerial from a high level shows the mix of uses in the area. We have some industrial use over here, the Carboy Industrial Park. Here between Godfrey, or west of Godfrey, there's some industrial activity. Over between Coker and Brocksmith, there's some industrial activity. This is the subject site. You can see the majority of the area is still agricultural, and there's some large lots, single-family residential throughout. So the future land use map shows the mixed-use future land use designation that was established, I believe in 1990, when the future land use map was adopted. It covers about 360 acres or so. This is the subject property. You can see the majority or most prevalent future land use designation is the agricultural five. Also some agricultural two, some residential estate that goes from this point over to the Turnpike. It's the mixed-use future land use designation that requires the property owners to request a planned zoning district for a rezoning. So the mixed-use future land use designation coincides with an urban service boundary, a freestanding urban services boundary. Here's the property at that southeast corner, and here's the urban service district for the rest of the area. I think that the nearest lines are over at Morningside, so it's a couple miles from where there are utility lines. This area is in the St. Lucie County Utility Service Area, but there are no water or sewer lines in this area at this time. This, with the mixed-use future land use designation, there's also the West Orange mixed-use activity area, the orange area and the pink area. The orange area, the uses, it's a specific use activity, and the uses that are permitted in this area are limited to industrial or commercial uses. In the pink area, including the subject property, there's a wide range of uses that are permitted, including residential, institutional, professional service office, general, commercial, public service, and utility, and industrial. It's a low-intensity specific use area, so it's capped at, for industrial uses, at a The current zoning atlas shows again the predominance of the Ag 5 outside of the immediate Orange Avenue corridor. You can see this property is Ag 1. The property owners own some 72 acres. They own this parcel and this parcel. They're only requesting to rezone the northern 35 acres. We have a mix of zoning districts, some industrial light in the purple color, Ag 2.5 in tan, Ag 5 in the brown, RS 3. There's a mix, a mix of zoning districts, as there is somewhat of a mix of uses out there. The proposed zoning atlas only affects this property, 35 acres, and it would become the planned non-residential zoning district. So with the planned zoning districts, planned non-residential zoning district, we are, you can establish the development standards and the uses, and the applicants are requesting to basically be governed by the industrial light zoning district and the uses that are permitted therein, except for the following uses, which would not be allowed. So local and suburban transit, marinas, that doesn't mean a bus can't run on the road. It means you're not going to operate your bus terminal out there. Marinas, airport, landing and takeoff field, wholesale petroleum and bulk stations and terminals, and scrap and waste materials. Otherwise permitted in the industrial light would not be permitted on this property. The proposed planned non-residential zoning districts are based on the preliminary development plan, which we'll see in a minute. They're proposing to create three lots. The minimum lot is almost 11 acres. 10.96 acres coincides with the smallest lot they're creating. The lot width 401 feet, minimum road frontage 401 feet. So the industrial light zoning district requires only a 20,000 square foot acreage and requires only 100 feet of lot width, so their standards are above and beyond what is required for industrial light. The minimum front yard shall be at least 25 feet, the minimum rear yard at least 20 feet, the minimum side yard at least 10 feet, and the minimum corner side yard at least 20 feet. These are consistent with the industrial light zoning district. The rear yard and the side yard are asterisked because they are proposing that when adjacent to estate residential lots, that the rear yard and the side yard would be increased. So the minimum size setback, if it's adjacent to residential use, would increase to 20 feet, and the minimum rear yard would increase to 25 feet if adjacent to residential. Maximum building height is 60 feet. Maximum building cover cannot exceed 50%. The 60-foot building height is higher than what is permitted in the industrial light, which allows building heights of up to 50 feet, but it's lower than what is permitted in the agricultural zoning districts. In the agricultural zoning district, you can have a building up to 80 feet. So this is the proposed preliminary development plan. There, as I mentioned, they're proposing to establish three lots each. Lot two and three are just under 12 acres. Lot one is just under 11 acres. They propose driveways onto Orange Avenue from lot two and lot three, and access onto Shin Road from lot one. It's possible that, given the different regulations that apply and minimum separations from intersections and driveways from, you know, commercial driveways adjacent to residential uses, it's possible that this driveway here, in fact, will need to be relocated to south of the residential lot. So that's possible, that that may change on the final site plan. So at this time, we don't have building footprints that are proposed. We don't have the detail about where the stormwater detention will be. We don't have, and we don't have details about where the parking will be. That will come in the final site plan. This preliminary development plan to accompany the rezoning will just establish these three lots and the basic standards about uses and development. We have the typical buffering sections that will be provided. So adjacent to non-residential property, so that would be in between those industrial lots, a 10-foot landscape buffer. When adjacent to the road right-of-way, that's along Orange Avenue and Shin Road, you have to have a 15-foot landscape buffer. And when adjacent to residential property, you have to have a 15-foot landscape buffer. All of them require a tree every 30 feet. They require a continuous hedge. When adjacent to the residential property, it also requires a wall or a fence eight feet high, and the landscaping must be located on both sides of the wall or fence. You can see how the trees alternate. So the Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended that the Board of County Commissioners approve the amendment of the zoning atlas and the associated preliminary development plan, subject to the conditions identified by staff in the staff report and the draft resolution. I did not say in response to the public notice, we have not received any questions or comments from anybody in the public. Staff recommendation is that the Board of County Commissioners adopt Resolution 2023-217, approving the amendment of the zoning atlas to planned non-residential development and approving the preliminary development plan, including the identifying conditions of approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
Honorable Chair, Irene, go back to the picture that looks like you have the single-family home, almost like an enclave in the one.
Yes.
Spot. You talked about the buffers and so on and so forth. How will that be addressed around that property? And has that property owner had any input? Because it looks as though it's surrounded by the light industrial.
Right.
And so with your setbacks being for the actual buildings that might go on that property, is that going to hold true for the enclave?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So it, you know, the industrial development, if it follows the standards adopted, it will require the different setbacks. It would be a 25-foot rear setback, I believe, on here. It would be a rear, I'm sorry, rear setback, and then these two would be the side setbacks. So it would require a 25-foot setback, and it would require a wall, eight-foot wall or fence, and the 15-foot landscape buffer.
So the landscape, will landscape be on both sides of the fence? Because it...
Yes, that's, unless this property owner files, unless the applicant files a waiver signed by this property owner that they made some other agreement, generally it's an eight-foot wall, eight-foot tall wall or fence. The landscaping is on both sides of that wall or fence. The driveway must be at least 25 feet also away from this property line, which is why I think it's going to have to move south. We have not heard, we have not received a question.
That's why I was concerned.
From this property owner.
Yeah.
I'm, my understanding is that the owner of the property, who is the petitioner and their representative, is here tonight, today, to answer any questions.
Okay.
That they know each other, and they're well aware of the application.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay. So this is quasi-judicial. We need to disclose. I will disclose, I've spoke to the applicant, staff, his planner, Mr. Maury. I'll begin with you, Commissioner Lee.
Oh, staff.
Yes, staff.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, this is a public hearing. Is anybody wishing to come forward? Good morning, Mr. Maury.
Good morning, Honorable Chair, Commissioners. I'm just glad to be here. Staff did a great job. If there are any questions, be glad to answer them. Other than that, I think it should be pretty simple.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you much.
Anybody will close the public comment, come back to the board, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll go to item two. Madam Secretary, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Corey Benton, planning manager for the record, presenting agenda item 11A2. This is also a petition for rezoning to the planned non-residential development. We have connectivity here in just a moment. Excellent. Great shape. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and it couples a proposed rezoning and preliminary plan. This morning's public hearing was duly noticed with a display ad in the local newspaper, mailed notice owners of property within 500 feet, and a public notice sign placed on the premises. Here's a location map showing the property north of Orange Avenue, along the west side of the Jenkins Road extension, north of Orange Avenue, due north of Loop Road. And as shown in the aerial, it's south of Floyd Johnson Road. The petition site is just over 34 acres in size. It's currently undeveloped, owned by Joseph Miller, and the petitioners are Lori and Richard Tamboni of the Tamboni Companies. They are partnering with representatives from the engineering design construction team to pursue this petition, which is, the site is located within the mixed-use future land use category, specifically within the Loop Road mixed-use activity area. In August of 2022, the Board of County Commissioners updated this activity area to transition this low-intensity district from having the purpose of office, commercial, general, and institutional uses to support the growing demand for light industrial or flex warehouse activity, serving the I-95 and Orange Avenue interchange, proximity to King's Highway, which is undergoing significant expansion, and its direct connectivity to the Florida The mixed-use land use category and specific use areas do require rezoning to planned development, as with the prior petition. In lieu of a direct rezoning to the industrial light, this affords an opportunity for the Board of County Commissioners, staff, the applicant, and input from adjacent stakeholders, an opportunity to establish a design and a development approach that enhances compatibility, accounts for the surrounding uses in a more intricate manner. And as displayed on screen, this is an overlay of the preliminary plan onto an aerial. These, we do have established low-density, single-family to the north across North St. Lucie River Water Control District, Canal 44, and Floyd Johnson Road right-of-way. We have an old extraction mine to the west that supported the interstate development. That is an older home that has some inner uses for a wedding venue, and then undeveloped property due south. But we do have a site plan approved for approximately 300,000 square feet due south, which would support expansion or consolidation of the Treasure Coast Food Bank, as well as a future light industrial development. And then the city of Fort Pierce has extended its territorial limits, annexing the property due east, denoted here in a green shade and outline. But the preliminary plan strategically orients the future development in a manner that considers the surrounding uses in the short term and long term, providing for the stormwater areas to the north, acting as both a physical buffer and screening area from this light industrial development, placing the finished, less intense portion of the project on the north side, supporting employee parking, then the buildings, which are subject to the community architectural standards, and we'll see some design intent here shortly. But this plan supporting for up to 375,000 square feet of light industrial warehouse space between three buildings, with all more back-office intense activities isolated to the south side of those finished buildings, including loading, or if there was storage of any finished products, that would occur on the south side, again with access primarily from Jenkins Road to the east. This plan proposing extension of the paved section of Jenkins Road to the north to serve this project, commitment of right-of-way at the west end to support the Jenkins Road Special Area Plan roadway network that will enhance transportation in this area, and of course, extension of central water and wastewater utilities to support this development. Part of the preliminary PNRD plan allocation of open space, and as we typically see with development, the identification of stormwater treatment areas, but this project is committed to enhancing those areas in alignment with the county's Land Development Code through upland buffer plantings, littoral plantings, but also the provision of a recreational trail for employees during their break or before, after the shift, an opportunity to walk around the several acres devoted to the stormwater system that, again, will be enhanced with landscaping and will provide onsite recreation. So a very creative approach to a light industrial project. And keeping those recreations... And keeping those recreational activities, again, on the south side of the canal, far from the existing residential units, but also away from any of the truck traffic or more intense activities on the site to support employee safety. Again, commitment of the project to comply with the county's community architectural standards, elevating the design requirements in lieu of typical metal building for industrial development, this would require more of a Class A warehouse industrial space with windows, defined entrances, foundational plantings, and other enhancements. This district providing for a maximum height of 40 feet with architectural features, having the ability to extend further to screen mechanical equipment or other needs on the roof, and again, to enhance some of the architectural design. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this petition at their October meeting and unanimously offered a recommendation of support. Back a year ago, the applicant did host a neighborhood meeting, bringing out residents and other stakeholders in the area, identifying some of the design intent provisions to protect their way of life, provide for physical separation, screening, and support compatibility in the area. It was well received. Staff is recommending that the Board of County Commissioners authorize the rezoning and preliminary plan through Resolution 2023-218, with the presented conditions of approval in the staff report, based upon consistency with the county's comprehensive plan and Land Development Code. The applicant's representatives and the petitioner are present this morning, if there's any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yeah. Corey, you mentioned that the water and sewer would have to be extended. Would that then be coming from Fort Pierce?
That is correct. Commissioner Zadovsky, Fort Pierce Utilities Authority is the provider in the area. They have available water, wastewater, fiber optics, as well as natural gas. With the City of Fort Pierce's limits or territorial extension to the east, upon a final development order and the entering of a service agreement, the City of Fort Pierce would have the capacity to eventually annex this property.
I'm sure that the applicant knows that. I just want to make sure that that was clear. Oftentimes, folks don't realize that they're going to be annexed with that service.
That's correct.
Thanks. Okay, this is quasi-judicial. I'll begin, I have spoken with staff. Commissioner Lee?
Staff.
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 Thank you. You have something? Okay, I'm going to open up to public comment. Is there anybody wishing to come forward?
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Chairperson, Members of the Board. For the record, Brad Curry with EDC, representing the applicant. Just wanted to let you guys know that I was here. And Richard Tamboni, the gentleman who'll be developing the property, is also here. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody wishing to come forward? We'll close public comment, come back to the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Okay. That finishes up public hearing. Y'all have a great Thanksgiving. Mr. Curry, Mr. Tamboni. We'll go to regular agenda. Item one. While they're coming up, this is quasi-judicial. I'll begin with, I've spoke with staff, and I believe, actually, she's coming forward. I've had a conversation. I apologize. What is your last name?
Sloth.
Sloth. I've had conversations with Mrs. Sloth. Commissioner Lee?
Staff.
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 Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair and Commissioners, for the record, Amy Cooper, Environmental Regulations Manager, accompanied by Joanne Riley, presenting a Category One wetland waiver request. The St. Lucie County Comprehensive Plan classifies wetlands into three categories based on their size, location, and hydrologic connectivity to adjacent water bodies. Category One wetlands are those which are hydrologically connected to a natural surface water body, are 20 acres or larger, or contain strategic habitat conservation areas. Impacts to Category One wetland or its buffer may only be approved by the Board of County Commissioners in accordance with Comprehensive Plan 6.1.14.3. The subject parcel was recorded March 11, 1926, as lots six and seven is shown in red on the plot exhibit. It is located on the west side of Mary B. Drive and directly at Buxton Oxbow of the North Fork of St. Lucie River. The subject parcel is zoned RS3 residential single-family at three units per acre with a future land use of residential urban. The surrounding properties to the northeast and south are also zoned RS3 with a residential urban future land use. And to the west is a conservation public property known as Idabel Island. In 2004, the subject parcel contained two jurisdictional wetlands, as shown on this slide. The 1,960-square-foot isolated wetland on the northern portion of the parcel was filled sometime between the issuance of the 2004 FDE permit and 2009 for the construction of a single-family residence. In 2019, an updated FDEP jurisdictional determination was provided to the applicant for a proposed single-family residence, and identified a total of .10 acre jurisdictional wetlands on site, which is part of a larger wetland system that continues off-site to the south. The Army Corps of Engineers supported the FDP determination and issued after the fact permit in 2020. The remaining 0.34 acres of onsite habitat consists of a mowed upland area, of which 0.17 acres makes up the required wetland buffer, and 0.1 acres makes up the required 50-foot shoreline buffer along the North Fork. The conceptual site plan consists of a single-family residential structure totaling 2,394 square feet, which results in 0.04 acres of direct fill impacts to the wetland, and the remaining development impacts are proposed within the associated 50-foot wetland buffer. The red shaded area is the area of impacts, and the blue shaded area is what will be placed under conservation easement. The unshaded area and the remainder of the parcel along the northern perimeter is not within any environmentally sensitive habitats. Per Comprehensive Plan 6.1.14.3, the board may grant a wetland waiver to impact a Category One wetland or its associated buffer when no other reasonable alternative exists, and avoidance and minimization of impacts cannot otherwise be achieved. Staff has reviewed the subject request and made the following determinations. This proposed project was previously approved on September 21, 2021. However, the waiver expired after 12 months from the date of adoption. The proposed site is consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. Staff requested reducing the size and/or the configuration of the proposed residence, resulting with the shoreline, I'm sorry, resulting with the residential structure to be shifted east away from the shoreline. The strict criteria for granting a Category One wetland waiver detailed in Comprehensive Plan Policy 6.1.14.3 requires avoidance and minimization of impacts to the greatest extent feasible while still allowing reasonable use of the property. Following review of the application with the concurrent proposed site plan and the strict criteria for avoidance and minimization of direct impacts to Category One wetland and/or its associated upland buffer, staff has determined the proposed site plan meets the avoidance and minimization criteria, and therefore recommends approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Any questions?
My presentation.
Of course I do.
I know, I'm sure you do. Go ahead. I know that Commissioner Fowler, Commissioner Lee, y'all have hit the ground running, and you know what you're doing nowadays. We don't need to continue to educate you because y'all are now pros at all this. However, just for a little bit of information, this is something that was approved two years ago, and it's just kind of like moving everything forward. So I just wanted to, public, I'm watching, understand that as well. Commissioner Zadovsky?
And so, Amy, you said that because it's come back, you made some additional adjustments. Can you repeat that? What your new adjustments are?
Commissioner Zadovsky, there weren't any, there was no change from the first, from the 2021 approval to this approval.
Moved it more east.
So that was from the 2004 to present.
The real question, well, anytime it's Category One, I always have challenges with it, right? So you've worked hard to get this done, and one thing I do have an issue with is, there's not going to be water and sewer here. This can be well and septic. So this is a direct flow into the North Fork. Are we requiring the septic, if this gets built, to be the better-valued anaerobic systems that we've approved in the past? I'm going to talk about the ones of 25th and, the 17 units on 25th and Midway. That community over there was right along the North Fork or Ten Mile Creek, and we required the septic to be the upgraded version, the anaerobic version with the maintenance provisions.
Commissioner Zadovsky, that's Florida statute now, as of next year. If you're 70 feet within the water, you have to have the systems in place.
I just want to make sure that, for the record, that we're
Okay.
Having that conversation.
I'm just saying it's statute. They have
The applicant needs to know that that's going to be part of the approval.
It is, there is a concurrent application that's being handled administratively, which is the shoreline variance. They are installing an ATU system that is in the front yard, so the furthest away from the shoreline. And it's, I went back to this slide. I don't know if you can see my cursor moving. Fortunately, you can't.
There are computers are still hitting this up.
I'm sorry.
They keep going out.
All right. As long as that's part of the conditions.
So is that a motion to approve? I'll take a motion to approve. Somebody want to?
Motion to approve.
Okay, so there was, they said at the same time, Commissioner Bartz and Commissioner Fowler, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to item two. I believe we have Ms. Joanne.
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. For the record, Joanne Riley, Property Acquisition Manager. Item 12A2 is a companion to the item that you just recently approved for the Category One wetland waiver. A condition of approval of that Category One wetland waiver approval is that the, Mr. Gamboa will need to dedicate a conservation easement over a portion of the subject property that is outlined in blue. Environmental Resources and the County Surveyor have reviewed and approved the conservation easement and the Preserve Area Management and Monitoring Plan. With that, staff is recommending that the board accept conservation easement, the Preserve Area Management and Monitoring Plan. Authorize the Chair to sign the resolution and direct staff to record the documents in the public record.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Okay, that brings us to the end of our meeting, and I will let Mr. Landry close this out with announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Board of County Commissioners will hold a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 5, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. here in these chambers. And in addition, the Board of County Commissioners will hold an informal meeting on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 9:00 a.m., as well as a regular meeting on Tuesday, December 12, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. here in these chambers located at 2300 Virginia Avenue here in Fort Pierce. And that concludes announcements.
Okay, thank you. Now we're going to move on to the reorganization meeting. We have Clerk Mueller here with us this morning.
Good morning.
While she's coming up, I just want to say thank you to staff, and thank you to Mr. McIntyre's Legal Department and Acquisitions. You worked around our crazy schedules and my crazy schedule. I also want to say again, Jason, we're glad you joined the family. You've been a nice addition. And George and Mitte, you've done a really wonderful year. You know, there was a lot of hurdles to overcome this year, and you have taken us across the finish line. I don't know that we've ever been this strong and this well-organized, even with the directors you've put into place. We are a very, very strong county right now, and I'm proud of all the work that you've done. And also, I want to say to Commissioner Fowler, Commissioner Lee, I know that it seemed overwhelming in the beginning, but you both have conquered and succeeded, and you're actually like up there doing it now. So I see a huge transition in both of you, and it's very nice to see. So it's been an honor to serve, and I just want to also say thank you to my aide, Colleen, because she's had a crazy year getting married and putting up with me and my schedules as well, and I never take the time to thank her. So thank you, Colleen, for this year, and it's been an honor to be the Chair. So we're going to open it up till Clerk Mueller take over the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, County Commissioners. We are here to talk about the nominations, but before we do that, I'd like to turn it back over to Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Madam Chair. Thank you. Just want to take a moment and let you know that on behalf of your fellow colleagues, the Board, and county staff, we want to present you with a little token of appreciation for this past year as being Chair and all the efforts that you've done for the county. So we have a nice little picture for you, and we'd like to just present it for you. So thank you. We know how you love that attention. Just kidding.
I do not love that attention, and I don't, this is a beautiful picture. Whoever chose that, that's nice. Thank you.
You can yell at me later.
Was that you, Eric?
No, it was Mitte.
Nice job, Mitte.
So, Madam Clerk, back to you, please.
Thank you. All right. Board of County Commissioners is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Board of County Commissioners. Do you have nominations?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Townsend.
Thank you. I'm going to nominate Commissioner Zadovsky.
All right. Any other nominations? All right. Is there a second for Kathy Townsend?
I would second that motion.
All right. Do I hear a second for Commissioner Zadovsky? All right. Seeing, the floor is closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, please call the roll for Commissioner Townsend as Chair.
Commissioner Bartz?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Back to work, woman.
So I'm going to nominate Commissioner Zadovsky to be Vice Chair.
Okay. We'll go ahead and skip the four bell. She's very good. All right, the nomination has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Are there any other nominations? All right, the floor is closed for further nominations. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler? I mean, Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. We will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and return, and turn the meeting over to current Chair of the Environmental Control District, Commissioner Zadovsky.
All right. Are there any nominations?
At this time, the meeting of the St. Lucie County Environmental Control District is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for Chair of the Environmental Control District. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Commissioner Zadovsky.
All right. Is, are there any other nominations? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. The floor is closed. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, will you please call for nominations for Vice Chair?
I would like to call nominations for Vice Chair of the Environmental Control District.
I'll nominate Commissioner Fowler.
Are there any other nominations? All right. We have, we have nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Zadovsky?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Lee?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Bartz?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, we'll move into the Erosion Control District. At this time, we'll move into the Erosion Control District.
I'll nominate Commissioner Zdowski.
Second.
All right. Do we have any other nominations? Floor is closed. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We'll open up nominations for the Vice Chair.
Commissioner Fowler?
We have a nomination for Commissioner Fowler. Any other nominations? Hearing none? Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Turn it over back to the clerk.
Thank you. We'll open this meeting for the St. Lucie County Mosquito Control District. The floor is now open for nominations for Chair of the Mosquito Control District. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Commissioner Leet.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other nominations? Floor is closed. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barnes? Commissioner Barnes?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
New Chair Leet. Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Call for Vice. Commissioner Leet?
Call for a nomination for Vice Chair.
I'll nominate Commissioner Barnes.
Second. Call the roll.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
New Chair Barnes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnes.
All right. At this time, the meeting of the St. Lucie County Sustainability District is now in session. The floor is open for nominations for the Chair of the Sustainability District. Do we have a nomination?
I'll nominate Commissioner Fowler.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any other nominations? Floor is now closed. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Commissioner Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
New Chair Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll call for nominations for Vice Chair of the Sustainability District.
Nominate Commissioner Barnes.
Second.
Commissioner Zdowski?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Leet?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Townsend?
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chair Barnes?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. We'll recess as the Sustainability District and turn the meeting back over to Chair Townsend.
Oh, gosh. Okay. Where are we now? I think we are at item B. I want to, I want to take the reorg appointments. I know that it's got the boards and everything on here, but I think item three, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners at-large appointments, because of the situation we've had over the last couple of weeks, there has been people that have tried to apply, and I think that we need to extend this out a little bit and bring this back at another meeting and let anybody that was trying to get in, get in. So I want to pull item three. Does anybody have a problem with that? If not, I'm okay entertaining a motion for the rest of the appointments. If y'all are okay and you want to leave it on there, I'm fine with that. I just feel that there's been some people trying to get through them. Because of the emails situation, there's been people not been able to email in their applications.
So, Madam Chair, would you, within that recommendation, consider springing it back in January?
Yes, that's, just bring item three back, and that'll give the residents time to still apply if they want to. Other than that, all the rest, I'm okay with the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. On the, actually, let me back up a second. On item one, the commission appointments to the boards and the committees for 2324, we have a list. Everybody submitted what they wanted. I did want to make a couple changes on that. The canvassing board, because there's, what?
As I said, there's only one choice.
Yeah. Because there's three of reelection, I'm going to nominate, I'm going to put Commissioner Leet on the canvassing board, and you, Commissioner Fowler, as an alternate, only because I know you've had a new baby, and it's a lot of hours to do this.
Gotcha.
And I don't want to, unless you think you can do it, I'm happy to put you on it first and him as the alternate. I just know that you have a lot on your plate with the baby.
I would honestly love the opportunity, if that's okay.
Okay. So, okay, so you do that, and then Commissioner Leet, you'll be the backup with Commissioner Fowler. And then Council of Aging, Commissioner Barnes. The County Coalition, Commissioner Zdowski with Commissioner Leet. Friends at the Library, Commissioner Barnes. Homeless Advisory, Commissioner Leet. And on the Treasure Coast workforce, the Chair does not have to sit on that board. Is there somebody that would like to serve on that board?
I would like to.
You want to, Commissioner Fowler? Okay, Commissioner Fowler?
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just because it was quick, the Friends at the Library, I've had a conflict, which